We will have official oaths of all the councillors, presided over by Jen Mano of Mano Law, and after which time we will turn the agenda over to council and the mayor to chair the meeting. So we'll start with the mayor, please.
Yes, I guess.
I'm ready. I press. So. Maybe we can pass my bill. Execute. So. So. I wrote that. Where did I go? Especially in the best of my ability. Execute the party law. Yeah. Counselor. So. I didn't know. Where the bill is. Maybe we can pass my bill. Execute the party law. The office of councillor. Yeah. So. I wrote that. Where did I go? Especially in the best of my ability. Execute the party law. Yeah. Counselor. So. I wrote that. Where did I go? Especially in the best of my ability. Execute the party law. The office of councillor. Yeah. So. I wrote that. Where did I go? Especially in the best of my ability. Execute the party law. Yeah. Counselor. So. I didn't know. Where the bill is. Maybe we can pass my bill. Execute the party law. The office of councillor. Yeah. So. I wrote that. Where did I go? Especially in the best of my ability. Execute the party law. Yeah. Counselor. So. I didn't know. Where the bill is. Maybe we can pass my bill. Execute the party law. The office of councillor. Yeah. So. I wrote that. Where did I go? Especially in the best of my ability. Execute the party law. Yeah. Counselor. So. I didn't know. Where the bill is. Maybe we can pass my bill. Execute the party law. The office of councillor. Yeah. So. I wrote that. Where did I go? Especially in the best of my ability. Execute the party law. Yeah. Counselor. So. I didn't know. Where the bill is. Maybe we can pass my bill. Execute the party law. The office of councillor. Yeah. So. I wrote that. Where did I go? Especially in the best of my ability. Execute the party law. Yeah. Counselor. So. I didn't know. Where the bill is. Maybe we can pass my bill. Execute the party law. The office of councillor. Yeah. So. I wrote that. Where did I go? Especially in the best of my ability. Execute the party law. Yeah. Counselor. So. I didn't know. Where the bill is. Maybe we can pass my bill. Execute the party law. The office of councillor. Yeah. So. I wrote that. Where did I go? Especially in the best of my ability. Execute the party law. Yeah. Counselor. So. I didn't know. Where the bill is. Maybe we can pass my bill. Execute the party law. The office of councillor. Yeah. So. I wrote that. Where did I go? Especially in the best of my ability. Execute the party law. Yeah. Counselor. So. I didn't know. Where the bill is. Maybe we can pass my bill. Execute the party law. The office of councillor. Yeah. So. I wrote that. Where did I go? Especially in the best of my ability. Execute the party law. The office of councillor. Yeah. So. I wrote that. Where did I go? Especially in the best of my ability. Execute the party law. The office of councillor. Yeah. So. I wrote that. Where did I go? Especially in the best of my ability. Execute the party law. The office of councillor. Yeah. So. I wrote that. Where did I go? Especially in the best of my ability. Execute the party law. The office of councillor. Yeah. So. I wrote that. Where did I go? Especially in the best of my ability. Execute the party law. The office of councillor. Yeah. So. I wrote that. Where did I go? Especially in the best of my ability. Execute the party law. The office of councillor. Yeah. So. I wrote that. Where did I go? Especially in the best of my ability. Execute the party law. The office of councillor. Yeah. So. I wrote that. Where did I go? Especially in the best of my ability. Execute the party law. The office of councillor. Yeah. So. I wrote that. Where did I go? Especially in the best of my ability. Execute the party law. The office of councillor. Yeah. So. I wrote that. Where did I go? Especially in the best of my ability. Execute the party law. The office of councillor. Yeah. So. I wrote that. Where did I go? Especially in the best of my ability. Execute the party law. The office of councillor. Yeah. So. I wrote that. Where did I go? Especially in the best of my ability. Execute the party law. The office of councillor. Yeah. So. I wrote that. Where did I go? Especially in the best of my ability. Execute the party law. The office of councillor. Yeah. So. I wrote that. Where did I go? Especially in the best of my ability. Execute the party law. The office of councillor. Yeah. So. I wrote that. Where did I go? Especially in the best of my ability. Execute the party law. The office of councillor. Yeah. So. I wrote that. Where did I go? Especially in the best of my ability. Execute the party law. The office of councillor. Yeah. So. I wrote that. Where did I go? Especially in the best of my ability. Execute the party law. The office of councillor. Yeah. So. I wrote that. Where did I go? Especially in the best of my ability. Execute the party law. The office of councillor. Yeah. So. I wrote that. Where did I go? Especially in the best of my ability. Execute the party law. The office of councillor. Yeah. So. I wrote that. Where did I go? Especially in the best of my ability. Execute the party law. The office of councillor. Yeah. So. I wrote that. Where did I go? Especially in the best of my ability. Execute the party law. The office of councillor. Yeah. So. I wrote that. Where did I go? Especially in the best of my ability. Execute the party law. The office of councillor. Yeah. So. I wrote that. Where did I go? Especially in the best of my ability. Execute the party law. The office of councillor. Yeah. So. I wrote that. Where did I go? Especially in the best of my ability. Execute the party law. The office of councillor. Yeah. So. I wrote that. Where did I go? Especially in the best of my ability. Execute the party law. The office of councillor. Yeah. So. I wrote that. Where did I go? Especially in the best of my ability. Execute the party law. The office of councillor. Yeah. So. I wrote that. Where did I go? Especially in the best of my ability. Execute the party law. The office of councillor. Yeah. So. I wrote that. Where did I go? Especially in the best of my ability. Execute the party law. The office of councillor. Yeah. So. I wrote that. Where did I go? Especially in the best of my ability. Execute the party law. The office of councillor. Yeah. So. I wrote that. Where did I go? Especially in the best of my ability. Execute the party law. The office of councillor. Yeah. So. I wrote that. Where did I go? Especially in the best of my ability. Execute the party law. The office of councillor. Yeah. So. I wrote that. Where did I go? Especially in the best of my ability. Execute the party law. The office of councillor. Yeah. So. I wrote that. Where did I go? Especially in the best of my ability. Execute the party law. The office of councillor. Yeah. So. I wrote that. Where did I go? Especially in the best of my ability. Execute the party law. The office of councillor. Yeah. So. I wrote that. Where did I go? Especially in the best of my ability. Execute the party law. The office of councillor. Yeah. So. I wrote that. Where did I go? Especially in the best of my ability. Execute the party law. The office of councillor. Yeah. So. I wrote that. Where did I go? Especially in the best of my ability. Execute the party law. The office of councillor. Yeah. So. I wrote that. Where did I go? Especially in the best of my ability. Execute the party law. The office of councillor. Yeah. So. I wrote that. Where did I go? Especially in the best of my ability. Execute the party law. The office of councillor. Yeah. So. I wrote that. Where did I go? Especially in the best of my ability. Execute the party law. The office of councillor. Yeah. So. I wrote that. Where did I go? Especially in the best of my ability. Execute the party law. The office of councillor. Yeah. So. I wrote that. Where did I go? Especially in the best of my ability. Execute the party law. The office of councillor. Yeah. So. I wrote that. Where did I go? Especially in the best of my ability. Execute the party law. The office of councillor. Yeah. So. I wrote that. Where did I go? Especially in the best of my ability. Execute the party law. The office of councillor. Yeah. So. I wrote that. Where did I go? Especially in the best of my ability. Execute the party law. The office of councillor. Yeah. So. I wrote that. Where did I go? Especially in the best of my ability. Execute the party law. The office of councillor. Yeah. So just point out that that previous email correspondence, councillor Wagner has been, according to this chart, has been put on that committee, Claris Home Coordinated Community Response to Elder Abuse Coalition.
Yep.
I'll change it on the listing to the Southern Alberta Protect Society.
They don't meet that often, Seth, but.
That's our fault.
Perfect.
Any questions from any councillors on the appointments or details on the responsibilities for any of the boards?
I either have my man eyes on. So how do I not? Sorry. I am not seeing the Baller Arena.
That's a recreation facility.
Yeah, that's you and me, I think, because.
It's listed under the recrea... Oh, right, right, right. I remember that now. Okay, sorry. Then I'm clear then. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Sorry, and I forgot to ask you guys to give me a... I need a motion to accept the Returning Officer's report, please. The prior one.
Councillor Kettles? Question?
Moved by councillor Kettles that the Returning Officer's report for the 2025 municipal election be accepted as presented.
All in favor? Approved. Do we need a motion to accept the committee appointments? Could I have a motion to accept the committee?
I'll make a motion to accept the proposed committee structure as presented.
Question?
Moved by councillor Zimmer that the proposed committee organization and structure be accepted as presented.
All in favor? Approved. Meeting dates. Proposed meeting dates. Abe?
So the calendar for proposed meeting dates with the meeting dates highlighted in green, every second, pardon me, every second and fourth Monday of the month, except when there's a stat holiday. I think that happens once in October, and then July, August, and December, one meeting in the month. So we do need a motion for council to approve those dates.
Can I have a motion, please? Councillor Carlson? Question?
Moved by councillor Carlson that the regular council meeting dates for 2026 be accepted as presented.
All in favor? Approved. Appointment of deputy mayor. Abe?
So we have a deputy mayor schedule for you throughout the term. It starts with councillor Carlson, and we do this alphabetically for three months at a time, as I said, throughout the, for the entire term. So that is your deputy mayor schedule for this council term.
Thank you. Do we need a motion for that?
Sorry, I think that's every four months, not three.
Councillor Knox makes that motion. Question?
Moved by councillor Knox that the deputy mayor appointments be accepted as presented.
All in favor? Approved. Annual motions. Abe?
So we do require annual motions for designating the office for the town and designating the banking institution for the town. So the municipal office, obviously, at 11155 Avenue West, and BMO and Connect First Credit Union as the town's banking institutions.
Could I have a motion for motion one? Councillor Wagner? Question?
Moved by councillor Wagner to designate 11155 Avenue West in Claris Home Alberta as the town's municipal office.
All in favor? Approved. Motion for motion two? Question?
Moved by councillor Carlson to designate BMO Bank of Montreal and Connect First Credit Union as the town's banking institutions where municipal funds are to be tabosaded.
All in favor? Approved. Motion to adjourn? Councillor Meister? Question?
Moved by councillor Meister that this meeting adjourned at 7:20 PM.
All in favor? Approved.
Isn't it called Service Credit Union?
I was trying to get it right. I looked it up, but that was Connect First.
Service Credit Union.
Service Credit Union.
Okay, Service Credit Union. Okay, I'll change the motion to say that. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move into the regular town council meeting. I'll call the meeting to order at 7:21. Adoption of agenda. Can I have a motion, please? Councillor Wagner? Question?
Moved by councillor Wagner that the agenda be accepted as presented.
All in favor? Approved. Minutes of October 14th, 2025. Could I have a motion to approve those? Councillor Meister? Question?
Moved by councillor Meister that the regular meeting minutes of October 14th, 2025 be accepted as presented.
All in favor? Approved. Delegations. Abe?
So we have Jackie Seeley, who is the Donor Relations and Development Officer with STARS, Shock Trauma Air Rescue Services, and we are usually, get a delegation from STARS every year around this time, and so she's here to provide counsel with a little report on STARS activities, and I'll turn it over to you, Jackie.
Thank you very much, Abe, and congratulations, Mayor Schlossberger and council, on your appointment to council. You've got an exciting four years ahead of you. I'm Jackie Seeley, and for those who haven't met me yet, I'm from the small town of Passano. I'm part of the fundraising team with STARS, so I travel all over rural Alberta, and we're very happy to be a partner with the town of Claris Home for over five years now. So this year marks STARS' 40th anniversary of serving your back 40, so as a charitable organization, we continue to operate at no cost to the patient, thanks to the many partnerships that we have. It all began when a pregnant woman died from blood loss, leaving a father alone with their newborn. For Dr. Powell, STARS founder, her death was one too many and something had to be done. So he rolled up his sleeves and with some of the other founders got STARS literally off the ground. Next slide, please. So with six, over 63,000 missions flown to date, you know, sadly, Dr. Powell did pass away last April, and he was our first CAO, and interestingly, over the 40 years, we are now on our fourth CEO. So Dr. John Fro, our former chief medical director at STARS, he's been at STARS since 2012, is now in the seat of president and CEO, so we're in very good hands with him. Next slide, please. Our very first mission ever, December 1st, 1985, right here in southern Alberta, actually to Lethbridge for critically ill newborn Kelly Waldron. So Kelly still lives down in Lethbridge, has a husband and two children of her own. You know, the ripple effect of a life saved is, you know, really evident right there with Kelly, you know, so we all know she's 40 this year as well. We started off as Lions Air Ambulances, you can see down there on the bottom right, and because they really helped us with some initial funding to get STARS going. To date, several Lions clubs still contribute to STARS, so we really appreciate that partnership. In the middle, you'll see our BK117 helicopter that we had for 37 years, and in 2021, we started phasing in our current helicopter, which is the H145 in the top right corner. So we do have a fleet of 10 that operate from our six bases across western Canada. So we began in Calgary with the first base, then added on Edmonton and Grand Prairie, and then Saskatoon, Regina, and a base in Manitoba, in Winnipeg. So all bases are now H145 operational. The helicopters are identically equipped as airborne intensive care units. Next slide, please. So, yeah, in addition to the helicopters, we did add a fifth blade to them to provide more stability and safety, so, you know, we're really safer than ever. They are Bluetooth equipped and Wi-Fi, so we can actually download results right from the helicopter to the emergency link center, and then they can be sent to the receiving doctors at the receiving hospitals. Next slide, please. So basically, it is an airborne intensive care unit. As you can see, you know, a pitcher speaks a thousand words, basically. Next slide, please. And in several cases, you know, when we do have multi casualty incidents or multi, you know, people involved with an incident, sometimes two helicopters will respond. So we do share our air medical crew and our resources, our helicopters across borders, across western Canada, so where we're, you know, needed more, we can move our helicopters and our crew around. Thankful, very thankful for our partnerships with many of our partners in this chain of survival, especially your local fire department, for helping with the safe landing of the helicopter at scene calls, and, you know, on different locations, so they come out to do that. Pardon me. We do have night vision goggle capability, so we can fly 24/7. So STARS does have our own crew available 24/7, and with half of our calls being at night, that it really is essential. We land in a variety of complex landing locations, so responding to anything to, you know, recreational incidents, to oil and gas, agriculture, or forestry. In this case, they had to land on some logs in order to get to the scene where the patient was. Then also with floods that occurred, you know, quite a few years ago now, we actually had to land in a very precarious, like, area, hard to get into, to pick up a patient. Also, like, you know, say a riding incident, and also mountain incidents where we'll respond with our first-class air medical crew. Next slide, please. So in addition to, you know, fire and police helping us at the scene of an incident, our other partners in the chain of survival are EMS and also Alberta Health Services Fixed Wing. So in many cases, we'll, you know, take a patient to the hospital, and they may need to go, like, say from Edmonton to Calgary or whatever, and then at that point, they'll go by Alberta Health Services Fixed Wing possibly. And then sometimes our crew will also attend with that patient for the rest of their mission. And we do provide virtual care to many of the rural hospitals as well. So with that is basically a click, the medical professional can click the link and see the patient, like the STARS physician can actually see the patient through that link on a cellphone. So we can provide that virtual care to patients as well through the medical professionals at your rural hospitals. Next slide, please. And these are the types of incidents that we fly for, and every year, we kind of assess, you know, which, you know, volume of missions were the greatest. So actually cardiac has surpassed vehicle incidents now being the number one thing that we fly for. And then after that, still vehicle incidents, and then other different types of medical illnesses or incidents that occur. Next slide, please. The SIM Cup competition, this is where our crew, actually, we send a team of two every year to this annual simulation competition through the Association of Air Medical Services. So it's a very rigorous competition. They're assessed on managing multiple patients, and the timing and outcome of that patient as well. And I'm happy to say that, you know, we do have these two-time international champions, but also just last week, we were at that competition again, and our team of two took first place again. So we're extremely proud of them and their dedication to always keeping their skills top-notch. Next slide, please. Oh, go back one.
Sorry.
No problem, thank you.
A little excited there.
So how does this all happen, all of the missions, all of the training, you know, all of the medical equipment, everything? Well, I'll speak to Alberta funding alone. So in Alberta, we have direct operating costs of thirty-six point six million. And we receive fifteen million per year from Alberta Health Services, our largest donor. So we're very thankful for that sustainability that that funding provides. But after that, we must fundraise fifty-nine percent of our operating costs. So that is in Alberta alone. So that's anywhere from, through the lottery, that brings in around a little over eleven million. Thankfully, people continue to support that. And then also community-driven events, community, like also corporate partnerships and business individual contributions as well. And then the municipal initiative that helps also bring in a little over two million per year. So, next slide, please. I'll just speak a little bit more to the municipal support. So we do have over ninety percent municipal support in Alberta. From the beginning, STARS has been built by the community for the community, so we're very thankful for this pillar of funding. And the map here just shows the different levels of support across the province. So the areas in the gray are actually under two dollars per capita. And any area in blue is two dollars per capita, anywhere up to ninety dollars per capita. So those blue areas, that sea of blue, we call our regional leaders. And I'm proud to say that the town of Clare's Home is a regional leader, so thank you for that. Some areas, we do have full regional partnerships that are outlined in a red border. So that is where all the towns and villages in partnership with the county or MD are all supporting in a united effort. And this really creates a robust health and safety network for us to be able to continue this, you know, to support the sustainability of STARS service. The nine provincial leaders are listed there. And so these are contributing at a much higher level per capita, like anywhere from two hundred, you know, thousand and up. This year, well, I should say, you know, it's actually, you know, anywhere over a hundred thousand and up. So this year, we did a logo unveiling for Rocky View County, so they have their logo on the helicopter. And we do have a couple more coming up within the next year or two. Foothills County and also Mountain View County. So, you know, it's all of us working together here to create that sustainability. Next slide, please. So in light of it being STARS fortieth anniversary, we wanted to share with you a broader history of the number of missions throughout the MD of Willow Creek and specifically for Clare's Home and scene calls near Clare's Home as well. So in total, throughout the MD, there are, there were three hundred and seventy-eight missions over a fifteen-year span. A hundred and eighty-one of those were from either the Clare's Home Hospital or just near Clare's Home. So to date in two thousand twenty-five, I've looked this up just last week, is twenty-four missions have been flown up to October twenty-seventh. So previously, over the fifteen-year span, it averaged twelve missions per year. This has almost doubled for two thousand twenty-five with twenty-four missions flown. So there's two types of missions that do happen. So we either have the critical interfacility transfers from the hospital, where the hospital phones and says, you know, we have a critically ill patient, please come. And we'll come and do that transport to Calgary to one of the tertiary care centers. The others are the scene calls where, like you saw in that other picture, you know, we may land on the highway if there's a highway incident, or even out on a farmer's, you know, in a, on a farmer's land or on a country road. So and those usually come in through nine-one-one, or if the patient has a registered site with STARS, then they phone us directly and are put through to our STARS transport physician to assess their emergency and get them the help that they need. Next slide, please. So a very big thank you to the town of Clare's Home. We greatly appreciate the sustainability that you provide with us by moving to a standing motion. So that is at seventy-five, pardon me, seventy-seven fifty fixed rate per year based on two dollars per capita. So thank you very much for that sustainability it provides for us. So like I noted here, we do have twelve missions per year. You're probably going to see that change on next year's report. And then we do provide the virtual care, like I mentioned earlier. We're available twenty-four seven, so you're supporting something that is giving the residents of the town of Clare's Home the very best chance at survival, should they be facing their worst day. So it is all thanks to partnership as we celebrate our forty years and moving forward. So a life is saved every day, and your partnership continues to make it possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions? Comments? Yeah?
You're very welcome.
Perfect. Thank you for the report.
Absolutely, and I will leave you a couple calendars for two thousand twenty-six. It's hard to believe, it's just around the corner. So one for your office here and one for the fire department. We greatly appreciate everything that they do.
Thank you. We'll move on to action items.
Enjoy the rest of your meeting.
Yep. Six point eight. Bylaw eighteen eighteen, road closure. Abe?
Did you want to talk about the correspondence? Just treat it as a.
Okay.
Five, five B.
Five B. Can you read the letter, Abe?
Sure. Read it, summarize it, or read it?
Summarize.
Okay. So we have a letter from a resident, Marcel Trinkhaus. And the letter is concerning, pardon me, ongoing noise and traffic violations by transport trucks on Highway Two through Clare's Home. But essentially, it's about the excessive use, in their words, excessive use of engine retarder brakes, and also concerns about traffic safety with speeding semi-trailers going through town. Resident mentions that they have, the constant noise does affect some medical conditions, sleep disruption, and PTSD and multiple sclerosis. And so this has led to some quality of life issues. And so requesting that council take action to enforce no use of Jake brakes and enforce that traffic along the highway. The resident was supposed to be in attendance, but is not here.
Take that for information?
I think, yeah.
Reply?
We could, yeah, we can send a reply, we can bring something back to the agenda next time, which is traditionally how we deal with delegations. People come out and, or residents or delegations come out, and if they have a request, traditionally, council doesn't deal with it at that, but discusses it at the, at the following meeting. So because this letter has been addressed to council, we will provide a response. Maybe at the next meeting, we'll have a conversation. But we are in the process of getting a peace officer in town, and so we would expect to see some more enforcement on the highway. This one is a bit of a tricky one to enforce at times. However, we'll talk to the supervisor of the future peace officer and get a response to council at the next meeting.
Bylaw can't, I think it's my understanding that bylaw can't pull people over.
No moving violations.
No moving violations, right.
So a peace officer can do that?
Yep.
Moving on? Bylaw number eighteen eighteen, road closure bylaw, Abe?
So Development Department has been working on the redevelopment of the storage facility south of McDonald's. The current owners would like to move the storage facility, storage units to another location and redevelop the land. All the, all the approvals for that process happens at a different phase of the development process. So as we work through scenarios for servicing traffic, et cetera, one idea is to utilize the current non-used roadway, alleyway directly to the south of that property for entrance and exit to decrease traffic onto the highway and to allow for better turning for delivery trucks. And we have that area highlighted on the RFD council. This will require a road, pardon me, a road closure bylaw. And we have previously talked to council about this, who directed, directed us to prepare that bylaw. And so that bylaw is on the agenda for first reading. We've talked, of course, reviewed this with the infrastructure department. They don't require the alley for servicing of stormwater. The remainder of the road alleyway will, will remain open for access. As with all road closure bylaws, or other instances when the town has subdivided or given some of its land away to private residents or businesses, the receiving homeowner or business owner pays for the closure, surveying, alley upgrading. All the upgrades will be borne up by the owner. And as I said at the September twenty-second meeting, council approved us to proceed or prepare a first reading of the road closure bylaw. For information about the process, we will get first, if council approves first reading, we'll have a public hearing. And then the bylaw has to get circulated to the Minister of Transportation and get approval. That process can take six to eight months. And then we have to get that, the town has to get that prior to second and third readings. So if council approves this reading of this bylaw, I guess that's the, that's the timeframe or the process. And so that is, the portion is, I think it's about point one-three of an acre. Plan six-five-eight, lot two, block one.
Questions? Discussion?
All move first reading?
Councillor Carlson? Question?
Moved by councillor Carlson to give bylaw number one-eight-one-eight a road closure bylaw first reading.
All in favor? Approved. Bylaw eighteen nineteen, bylaw enforcement officers bylaw, Abe?
So we have a bylaw enforcement officers bylaw that we need to pass in order to be in compliance with the MGA. Specifically, if we're enforcing bylaws, we have to have the specific powers and duties of bylaw enforcement officers laid out in a bylaw and establish disciplinary procedures for misuse of power, including penalties and an appeal process applicable to misuse of power by bylaw enforcement. And so previously, we had a designated officers bylaw that set aside a bylaw and or peace officer as a designated officer, gave them the kind of powers, or designated their powers and authorities under certain sections of the MGA to enforce bylaws, to do patrols, to levy fines, et cetera. We are required to have more detailed, I guess, explanations via bylaw of how we appoint a bylaw officer. I'll just pull it up here. But how we would go about appointing a bylaw officer, the powers and authorities and duties of the bylaw officer. Supervision and accountability. Modification or revocation of bylaw enforcement officer appointment. And then complaints, that's a really big one, is just that kind of accountability piece and transparency piece as well. So if people do have residence or business owners have a complaint about a bylaw officer, they can turn to this bylaw. They can see the process, where they go to make a complaint, how they make that complaint, timelines for how that complaint is responded to. There are certain timelines and requirements that we have to respond, and how, how we actually respond. So there's a number of different scenarios, if a complaint is found to have merit, if it doesn't have merit, et cetera. And so it's all laid out pretty clearly in the bylaw and in the appendix of the bylaw. It names, again, who the complaint is made to. And at the town here, it does say the CEO has the, a lot of these powers and authorities or designate. It is designated at the town office to the development officer. Development services manager is the supervisor, and so that's all been delegated to, to that staff member. But we are looking for first reading tonight of this bylaw.
Questions? Discussion?
A motion to give bylaw number eighteen nineteen to town of Clare's Home enforcement officer bylaw first reading.
Question?
Moved by councillor Meister to give bylaw number one-eight-one-nine the bylaw enforcement officers bylaw first reading.
All in favor? Approved. Could I have a motion to repeal bylaw sixteen ninety-nine? Councillor Wagner? Question?
Moved by councillor Wagner to repeal bylaw number one-six-nine-nine, the community peace officer bylaw.
All in favor? Approved.
Thanks for catching that. I forgot about that part. As we detailed in the RFD, that bylaw is no longer required. Most of our policies address some of the things that were set out in the bylaw, our CPO policies. And the CPO authorities are given to them by the province and managed by the provincial CPO program. So that's, that's why we're asking for its repeal.
Okay. Provincial government correspondence, six point one, Abe?
Correspondence from municipal affairs back in September. Council requested a meeting with Minister Williams. And they've just indicated that council, Clare's Home council, will not get a specific meeting with the minister, but have invited council to seek the minister out at an open house on Thursday, November thirteenth. More of an informal conversation than an actual sit-down meeting with the minister. But have invited. But have invited council to bring your priorities and concerns, and they will listen to you and hear you out.
Take it for information, 6. C, other government correspondence. Alberta municipalities, Ape?
So this is the Alberta Munis Annual General Meeting. To those councillors who are new, Alberta municipalities is our advocacy group for urban municipalities throughout the province. That conference is coming up next week. And their annual general meeting will be Thursday, November 13th. Someone help me out here. The conference starts on the 13th and ends on the 14th. When is the AGM?
12. It starts on the 12th.
I think this is just the general meeting.
Annual general meeting.
Yeah. Starts, it starts, I don't know, it doesn't even say, does it? Okay. Well, it's during the conference.
It's just during the conference.
There you go. We won't message it.
Yeah.
They announce it.
And it's where the membership votes for their representatives, for the executive of the board of the Alberta Munis. So you vote from amongst yourselves for your representatives at Alberta municipalities.
Thank you. 6. D, local correspondence, Rowan House Society, Ape?
So Rowan House Society is inviting council to proclaim November 2025 as Family Violence Prevention Month. Council's position is to not claim, proclaim any months or days, and out of fairness to all, not proclaiming any. If there's any wish to look into changing that, administration can do that, but otherwise the recommendation would be to take this information. And we advertise in the local press and the town news.
Questions, discussion?
Is there, I'm sorry, I have to turn that off. Is there any reason why, or is it just more that it, to be fair to everyone, that it would just become bogged down with basically everyone asking us to proclaim a different day?
We'd have three proclamations per council meeting if we did, everybody, right?
Got you.
So it's just, it's hard to keep up with. 6.2, Old Man River Regional Services Commission, Ape?
So Old Man River Regional Services Commission, which is the group that does the planning for the town and pretty much every municipality, small municipality and county in southwestern Alberta, have hired a new CAO, Tracy Thomas. And this is correspondence from ORSC, just indicating that they have selected the new CAO. And our mayor was on the hiring committee that oversaw that process. And so I know we actually put in fair bit of work in that recruitment process. So congratulations on finding your person, Mayor, and thank you. The previous CAO had been there for 20 years, been there for a long time at ORSC, very well-known, Len Skiper.
Take that for information, thank you. 6.3, Old Fashioned Christmas, Saturday, December 6th, Ape?
So the Old Fashioned Christmas, as you said, Mayor, is on Saturday, December 6th. So historically, I believe we've done this on a Friday evening. So there's a shift in the time of day and the day as well. But they are asking for permission to close the parking lot for the day to accommodate the event. Activities will be the same as they have been in the past, shopping until 6:00, entertainment in the parking lot, official lighting of the Christmas tree by the Citizen of the Year at the museum to end the event, and invitation to council to be part of that. Horse-drawn wagon rides, bonfire in the downtown parking lot attended by the fire department. Museum board and staff welcoming Clarson committee, other community groups have been invited to participate as well, and the ACO gas stage will be there for local performers throughout the day. So we do have some hours, I think, for the closure. Was it two to?
Well, two.
Oh, no.
It says running from 2:00 to 6:00.
Right.
But we want to close the parking lot from 8:00 o'clock.
From 8:00?
Yeah.
So we're looking for road closure, or yeah, sorry, closure of the parking lot from 8:00 until 6:00?
Six.
We need that approval from council.
Counselor Kettles moves that motion. Any questions, discussion?
Do we know why it was, two years ago it was at Amundston Park, and then last year it was in the parking lot? Was there some discussion about that or why it's moved there?
I think it was moved there to try and bring people back to the downtown. That's historically where it was. I think some of the business owners possibly, I'd have to verify this, but felt like there was a bit too much activity away from the downtown, and so believe that's why it was moved back last year. If anybody else knows any information?
That's right.
Yes.
I heard quite similar. The attendance from the store owners downtown always said it was a lot lower because it was, people just weren't, not that it's that far of a walk, but just a lot of people just hung out in the park, had fun there. Store owners are staying open late for people to shop late and didn't have the traffic that they usually had with the festivities in the parking lot.
Counselor Kettles? Question?
Moved by Counselor Kettles to approve the closure of the downtown parking lot from 8:00 a.m. until 6:00 p.m. and to provide barricades for the Old Fashioned Christmas event on Saturday, December 6, 2025.
All in favor? Approved. 6.4, Clarson District Health Foundation, Ape?
So the Health Foundation is putting together a Casino Royale Fall Fundraiser Gala. That is at the Community Hall on November 22, 2025. Tickets priced at $85. So they go on to talk about some of the equipment they've been able to purchase with some of their fundraising efforts in the past. They are requesting monetary support or contribution from council. Last year, council donated $1,000, and with that donation, you will get two tickets for
I think it's great. Make a motion that we donate $1,000 again, as we did last year for the Clarson Health, Clarson District Health Foundation.
Question?
Moved by Counselor Zimmer to support the Clarson District Health Foundation's Casino Royale Fall Fundraiser Gala on November 22, 2025, in the amount of $1,000.
All in favor? Information brief. New council important dates, Ape?
So just wanted to highlight some important dates. It is a busy, bit of a busy time for council with a lot of meetings. And so just highlighting some of these important upcoming dates. Of course, last week was the council orientation. That's a legislatively required orientation for the new council. Whether you serve the term or not, it's the new council, you have to get it, right? So November 3, organizational meeting and regular council meeting, obviously that's tonight. November 8, we're doing an in-house council orientation. 10 a.m. to 12 p.m., it's going to be a little bit longer than that, so please book off four hours for that. But we'll do a facility tour and review some important documents and do, we're actually going to do a little bit more of that orientation, that legislatively required orientation, because we didn't satisfy all of it last week. So slowly over the next, the next couple of months, we'll get there. There'll be more planning, orientation, planning and development orientation coming up at a future meeting as well. And then, of course, November 12th to the 14th, this is Alberta municipalities, we talked a little bit about this one, that is their annual convention, it's in Calgary. We do have council booked for the registration, it's all taken care of, and the rooms are also taken care of. We'll send that itinerary and those details out to you all in a separate email soon. Local Authority Elected Official Emergency Management Training, that is December 16th from 9 a.m. to 3 p.m. And that is a legislatively required emergency management training for elected officials. We'd like to stress or encourage you to take it in person, but if you can't, we can possibly do it virtually. It used to exist virtually. I don't know if it still does, but if you do need to, if you can't attend, we will look into that for you. Otherwise, it's booked for you on that day. And then strategic planning. So that's January 31, 2026, from 9:00 to 4:00. We will be having a consultant come in to assist council develop its strategic plan for the term. Also want to take this opportunity to mention that there will be a community survey going out by a group called Art of Change, they're the consultant, and they are going to be asking community members what their priorities are. And so that will be used to inform the strategic planning. That will, that survey will come out at some point in November, we don't have a date yet, but come out at some point soon here. So we'll probably get you a bit more information on that when we have more. We're actually meeting tomorrow to finalize some of those details. So that's all I got for that one. Any questions on anything from anyone?
No questions? Okay. 6.2, Travel Alberta Festival and Event Application.
So wanted to report this one back to council. We could have done it through the resolution status, but it was kind of a big one. We got a resolution at the last council meeting to apply to Travel Alberta Festival and Event Application for a music festival for next year. Long story short, we need more lead time to plan for an actual music festival. So when we went to go ahead and, if you recall, we proposed to couple it with Fair Days. Some of that information that we would need for the application, if we were doing it with Fair Days, we would have had, so location, an idea of costs, because we have past receipts for entertainers, a lot of that stuff, we would have had ready and we probably could have got an application together. But doing it as a standalone event, we needed a lot more planning, essentially. So just wanted to give you that verbal report, council, I guess I didn't want to bury it in a resolution status. However, this will be brought back to Economic Development Committee, recognizing that council has an interest in pursuing this grant and possibly with a music festival. There are some other ideas that our engagement coordinator has for this specific event application, sorry, Travel Alberta Event Application. So we'll continue the conversation at the Act Dev committee level, if that's okay with council.
Questions, discussion? 6. F, council resolution status, Ape?
Yeah, just an update on the past resolutions from other meetings. We did have a recent conversation about the VFDs, variable frequency drives. That ordering of those frequency drives is ongoing. Our utility services manager is in frequent contact with them, and it is moving forward, but it's not fast. Any questions on any of the other ones here?
Could you explain what variable drives are for the new councillors?
Yep. So that variable frequency drive is on our process, our water treatment pumps. It controls the frequency at which the pumps ramp up and slow down. And those drives, I think, were probably 18 years old, and they were starting to fail. And so our engineer, who very familiar with the plant, said, just get them all done at once, more cost efficient, and you really don't want these things to fail. So we have 25 of them. And so council approved back in, when was that, June, to replace those for a cost of So those are over at the highway pump station, the water treatment plant, I think is where, well, that's where most of them are.
Do we have a life expectancy on, on those, about around there?
Around 15 years, yeah. There's also one on here about the composting facility. So we have had conversations, we've met with the MLA. Essentially, where we're at with that one right now is looking into legislative changes. So we have been in touch with, also with staff with Alberta Environment and Protected Areas. They are looking at possible legislative changes that would carve out an understanding of the composting that we do, specifically yard waste, not composting kitchen waste type composting that the legislation seems to be geared towards. And so they're looking into developing some legislation that acknowledges what we're doing is less intensive and less, possibly needs less monitoring and regulation. There, it doesn't exist right now. And so that's the change we're going for, and we're just waiting to hear more from them. So no changes, imminent changes right now to our current yard waste composting facility. That doesn't mean that they won't come, but.
Okay, information items. Stars Horizon Spring 2025, Ape?
Stars Newsletter, some information for, general information on Stars?
Any question on the information items? Counselor Carlson moves to accept the information items. Question?
Moved by Counselor Carlson to adopt. Moved by Counselor Carlson to adopt the information items as presented.
All in favor? Approved. Motion to go in camera.
I'll make a motion to go in camera.
Counselor Zimmer? Question?
Moved by Counselor Zimmer to go in camera at 8:10 p.m. for the following items. A, Advice from Officials, ATIA Section 29. B, Advice from Officials, Section 29.
All in favor?